Twenty twenty-three regular Board of Education meeting to order. Nikki, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Nikki Austin, present. Jim Curran is absent. Rich Depry?
Present.
Eric Ecto?
Present.
Mike present?
Present.
Teresa Keena is absent. Dylan McGuire is absent. Terry Montgomery?
Present.
And Will Lasberg is absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. We are in session. I want to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Remove.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Terry. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our recognitions. And we recognize that you have a lot of choices, especially on a Monday night with the Packers playing. And we're excited that you decided to spend some of it with us to honor some great work by students and staff in our district. So we're going to take some time now to recognize them, and we'll start off with Abe Lincoln.
Melody Hanson from fifth grade coming up. Melody is a fifth grader at Abraham Lincoln, and I was excited to celebrate Melody for many reasons. She is a kind, caring, compassionate student. But the true definition of being responsible is doing the right thing even when no one is looking. And that is Melody. She sets a great example for herself and for all of those around her. So, Mr. Niemeyer, will you tell us a little bit more about Melody?
I shared a morning meeting today. I honestly, she didn't cross my mind right away for Student Month because I just kind of assumed she had gotten it already. So as soon as I found out that she didn't, I'm like, oh, we're going to take care of that. So, and she just, every single day impresses me with her responsibility. Her academics are amazing. Just everything about her is what you want in a fifth grade student. And I had some of her friends write some things about her. And usually when I do this, those of you that have been here, I do this every single time. We get a couple nights where it's like, nice, but there's some stories in here. And so it's pretty good. So, you know, she's so sweet, and I look forward to walking in the doors in the morning. She always tells the best stories. You know, she deserves this. She's so nice. She's always helping, and it's funny, and always willing to play with me. She's responsible and nice. And if a homeless person asks for change, she will give him her change. And Melody is the kindest person on the planet exclamation point. She was an amazing science partner. She, yeah, she was an amazing science partner. I love her exclamation point. She's the kindest and will always be willing to help and helps me win them in the dumps. So you can tell that you make a big impact on the other kids because we don't usually get that personal response. So you definitely, I see it, everyone sees it, Ms. Judd. Very, very proud of you.
Hi, Melody. I'm Rich with the Board of Education. It's great to hear some wonderful things about how you take care of your fellow classmates every day, and you're really caring for everyone around you, and you're making Abe a really wonderful place to be. From the Board of Education, we just want to tell you how much we appreciate what you do every day and how special you make everyone around you feel and how special you are in doing that. So thank you for everything that you do. We've got a certificate and a gift card to Barnes and Noble to get some books for you to remember the evening. Thank you so much.
So our winner this month at Northside is Elise Cleary. She's a fifth grader. I'm so excited that she actually got the first award of the year because it sets this bar of what we are looking for in our students who win the Excellence Award. She's just one of kind character, always respectful, always talking hard. But Ms. Copeland, her fifth grade teacher, is going to talk a little bit more.
Got it. And I had to write it down because there's a lot to say, and I didn't want to forget it. And actually, I wrote many drafts. A lot because it was super long, and I had to shorten it up. Trust me, it's got to the point, okay? So Elise, you are truly deserving of this award. Many people think that when it comes to this award, it's only one teacher vying for their student to receive Student Month. But it's much more than that. Elise was recognized by all the teachers and staff at Northside, and that means not only does she stand out this year as an exceptional student in person, but from the many years that she's attended Northside previously. As many of you know, Elise is raised in a family where strong attributes like being kind, dependable, and cooperative exude from each person. But I also love that she's becoming more and more comfortable with being her own person as well. The first thing I noticed about her as she started fifth grade was she was resilient and had the ability to adapt to challenging situations. I've seen many students put in a ton of effort and push through tough situations. But Elise goes above and beyond and uses those setbacks as opportunities for growth. She's never afraid to ask for help and seek opportunities to learn new strategies to overcome any obstacles she may face. I have seen persistence in her classwork, her summer work, and even in her extracurricular activities like dance, which, if you didn't know, she's an amazing dancer. So tonight, we recognize you not only for your academic achievements, but also for your character, your work ethic, and your ability to be a leader for those around you. Your journey at Northside is a shining example of what can be achieved with hard work and determination to be the best you can be. So congratulations again for being able to win an award, and I'm truly excited that this is only the beginning of our journey together in fifth grade.
Oh, wow.
All right, Elise, that's a pretty big deal. So I just wanted to thank you wholeheartedly for everything that you do every day. Your persistence, your resiliency, your ability to adapt and overcome. All of those traits are going to, or they're going to carry you very far. And as you model those for your fellow students, they're going to come along for the ride. And I can't thank you enough for doing that every day. So to Remember the Evening, we have a gift certificate and a gift card to Barnes and Noble. Great job. Keep up the good work. Congratulations.
All right. I am here to recognize a fifth grader at Parkside Elementary School. This is Quinn. And Quinn joined us at Parkside last year in fourth grade. And he joined us after doing homeschool for quite a while. And so the transition from learning at home to coming to Parkside, from the moment I met Quinn, he was excited to learn about school, had lots of questions about the routine, and worked really, really hard from day one. He knew that he had some things that he learned differently and didn't quite do it the way that we did. And so it was going to take a little bit of extra work, a little bit of extra practice, and a really good attitude. And he's had that since the day that he joined us. So really excited when Mrs. Miller nominated him as the first Student of the Month this year.
It's really exciting. Quinn, you are the best role model in our classroom for hard work right now. And I think the other kids see that, too. You don't give up. Lots of things are kind of hard right now, but you come and get extra help. You advocate for yourself. You let us know when you need more help. And kind, thoughtful, very polite. Just a really good role model all around. Congratulations.
All right, Quinn. Yeah, it can be a big deal to move to a new school. Sometimes it can be hard to make friends or adapt to that new surrounding. And it sounds like you've really embraced that, and you're running with it, and you're putting in the effort to build relationships with your fellow students that are going to work really well for you in the long run. You're going to help lift them up. They're going to help lift you up, and it's going to make the environment and the community at Parkside a better place. And we can't thank you enough for all the hard work that you do every day. Because I know it's hard, and we appreciate everything that you do. To Remember the Evening, we've got a gift. We've got a gift card to Barnes and Noble and a certificate. So congratulations. Good job.
Sorry, everybody, that was my light failure. I needed to cheer, so I was tired of standing. And I apologize. Joel, come on up. So our award winner at the middle school level is Joel Wellman, eighth grade superstar. He is a leader through and through in our building. Ms. Burke's going to talk a little bit more about that, but I just wanted to say, Ms. Damon and I talk about the kids that are on the docket to win this award, and we were just over the moon that you are our first winner for the year. It was a pretty easy choice, Joel. The favorite part about you that Ms. Damon and I want to recognize is the fact that you initiate and can engage in adult conversations in the building and classrooms outside. It's a skill that not everyone your age has. So thank you for building those skills. They're going to take you a long way in this world. Ms. Burke, go ahead.
All right. I also wrote down what I was going to say tonight because I am representing the Science Department team, so I also want to get their input. So the Science Department and I were so excited to nominate Joel and see him as our building selection for Student of the Month. After teaching Joel in science the past three years and seeing his leadership throughout his involvement in student council, we see so many different reasons why Joel is deserving of this award. Joel is a student who is hardworking, positive, reliable, and dependable, creative, and influences good in all those he meets. Ms. McGuire had this to say about Joel. What I find most remarkable about Joel is his positive attitude. We can think of a time where we didn't get enough sleep, things didn't go our way, or we're overwhelmed with things happening in our life, and it can impact how we interact with others. We speed up, we lose the time to connect with others, and we may not smile as often as we would otherwise. This is something I would never see in Joel. Joel is a student I think, when I hear the quote, "Start each day with a grateful heart." Each morning Joel comes in with high levels of positive energy. He welcomes and greets everyone he meets and always has a smile. Mrs. Pearson also has to say, "I witnessed his innate skill to do the right thing on a regular basis. His internal moral compass shines even when surrounded by his peers, making poor decisions. He knows how to treat others with kindness and respect, and is strong enough to speak up when he sees others being mistreated, even if it means standing up to his friends." So in closing, we just want to say that your compassion for others and willingness to help also highlights your hard work and your empathy. You do a great job of recognizing moments when he or your peers may not understand something, and you're willing to ask out loud and explain to others so everyone can understand and feel successful. So we are so incredibly proud of you and believe that you're deserving of this award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your maturity, your integrity. That's on display every day at the middle school. The example that you set for all of your other fellow students there is going to help everybody around you. And we can't thank you enough for all the hard work it takes to set that example and be that leader. And, you know, being thoughtful about the folks that come behind you as a member of student council. You know, you're probably working on things that may not benefit you immediately, but could benefit the next students that come through. And that's a wonderful mindset to have, especially in this school. So thank you so much for all the work that you do. We've got a certificate for your Remember the Evening and a gift card to Barnes and Noble to get some books. Congratulations.
All right. The Monroe High School Student of the Month is James Wall, senior at Monroe High School. James is here with Ms. Scholes, one of his teachers. James was actually nominated by four teachers at the high school. So that shows you how much support he has. I think, I don't want to see the thunder. You're probably going to hear a lot about how great of a leader and a man James is in our high school, and that's very well deserved.
All right. I have so much to say about James, I could probably speak for a half hour. But in the interest of time, I'm going to quickly go through the highlights. First, all of the extracurriculars that James is involved in are really important because there are several clubs at MHS that literally couldn't do what they do without James's work. When I think of his contributions to the Monroe community, I immediately think of his mentorship and leadership. From the beginning of his freshman year, James has been an active member of our GSA and has served in the role of our Pride Parade Committee Chair for the past two years. With James in this role, I am able to take a true advisory position and let him do all the planning, delegating, and execution. He has a gift for it, and I'm not exaggerating. I'm constantly impressed by the poise and maturity James expresses as a leader and a mentor for our students in the group, not just as the Pride Parade Chair, but also as a member of our leadership team and as head of the team this year. He has a knack for creating a community, and other students know him and trust him. James has been a member of our forensics team since his sophomore year. He's been drawn to pieces that really help express his identity in a way that engages audience while advocating for a broadening of perspective. He's placed at several tournaments. He's been a state qualifier for the past two years, and he helped us bring home conference titles the past two years. Not only can he captivate an audience in forensics, but his love of the arts doesn't end with performance of literature. He is an avid participant in theater, both as a performer and on the tech crew. He's a leader in art club. He's also a talented writer and pursues that outside the classroom. As a freshman, he approached me with his interest in creative writing, so I told him about our creative writing course for juniors and seniors. James took it his sophomore year. And then at the end of that class, he approached Ms. showers the teacher saying he wanted to create a writing club. So he did that last year. And now every week, we have a group of young writers meeting to share ideas, give each other feedback, and collaborate on their writing. And now a few words from his current teachers, from Ms. Dastro and AP Psych. James goes above and beyond to make connections between what he learns and the world around him. He will often share with me documentaries or news stories he has heard or seen that relate to what we've done in class. He's intrinsically motivated to discover the factors at play within individuals and society. James is very open-minded and willing to have uncomfortable conversations to understand various perspectives. He's well-respected by his peers and is always kind and humble. Academically, James is a diligent student who excels in both traditional exams and writing as well as creative projects. He's always willing to engage with and be helpful to his peers in order to deepen learning for everyone involved. From Mrs. Douglas in AP Art, James is an amazing art student. He goes above and beyond to challenge himself in my AP class, is a leader in art club and in the classroom. James works with our community. He participated in the Monroe Art Walk last Saturday and is currently painting a sign for the downtown square. Just an all-around fantastic person. And from Ms. Rudy in AP English, the Equity for Everyone group would not continue to exist without James. He has seamlessly taken on the leadership of this student group, and his motivation for doing so truly is to make the school a better place for all. James's composure in class is something I really appreciate. He submits high-quality work on time, and yet he never seems bothered by the more difficult tasks or aggressive timelines. His calm demeanor rubs off on his classmates, really influencing the dynamic of classes in the most positive way. His work is not only very high-quality, but he is particularly insightful and reflective. He exudes empathy in his everyday interactions with those around him, but he also demonstrates empathy for those unknown in his writing. So as you can see, we all agree, James can do it all and make it look easy, and he's more than deserving of this recognition.
James, it's hard to follow that up. I do want to make sure that I thank you for being a champion for inclusivity at the high school and making everybody feel like they're welcome and that they're valued and that there is a place for them at the high school, in your circle, and your awareness to give back to your community. I can't thank you enough for all of that. Keep up the good work, please. We've got a certificate for you to Remember the Evening and a gift card to Barnes and Noble. Congratulations.
We know it's our Southside Excellence Award winner, it's Ashley Wager. She hates them. She deserves it, though. Okay, so Ashley has been a kindergarten teacher for how many years to go?
This is my 13th.
13?
This wasn't my first time.
So three years ago, she came to Northside, and she has been a blessing ever since. I mean, I'd always heard what an awesome teacher she was at Abe Lincoln and how connected she was to the staff and how she was valued. But seeing just within a few years what you've done, Ashley, you're just, you're an incredibly phenomenal teacher. With kids, kids absolutely love her. Why? Because she is so energetic and so patient and just has nonstop activity happening. She's putting on a show, and that's hard. That is so hard. Every single day, no matter what's happening in her classroom, she's positive about it. As you know, kindergartners sometimes don't come in with the best habits yet. And Ashley really does a great job of forming relationships with them, not only the student, but also the parents. So parents love her and appreciate her, the way she communicates. I mean, every single day, she's sending out messages to parents, good and, you know, feedback. So colleagues absolutely love her. Why? Because she puts students first, always. And she cares for her colleagues very much. She likes to make school a fun place to be. So I just feel like we're incredibly lucky that you have chosen this education, that you're a kindergarten teacher, because you're just, you're blessed. We're blessed to have you. So it's an absolute honor just that you're in our district, Ashley.
Thank you.
Ms. Wager, thank you. Thank you so much for everything that you do every day. Building those meaningful connections with your students and then to be recognized by your fellow staff members is huge. You help lift everybody up around you, and I can't thank you enough for everything that you do. We've got a plaque for you to Remember the Evening, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you to say a few words if you'd like.
She really loves this.
Thank you for the nomination, and it's just an honor to be here. I love Monroe. You know, this is the only district I've taught in, and I don't have intentions of going anywhere else. I think it's a great community, great students, great families, and I just love watching them grow up and do amazing things. Melody was in my class as well. I wouldn't be the educator I am, though, if I didn't have the coworkers I have. I have been so blessed to work with some of the most amazing teammates, past, present, and they're the reason that I can do what I do. But it's, I don't even know how to put into words how awesome my teams are. And yeah, I just love my kids. I do. They're the reason that I do what I do, and they keep me smiling. And I'm always going home with lovely stories about the fun, fun things that are happening. And yeah, so, no, I love what I do, and I'm thankful to be a part of the district. Thank you for the award.
Congratulations again to all of our award winners for this evening. As we clear out, we just ask for all of our award winners to come on up to the front, both students and staff, and Ms. Beauchamp will get a picture. Otherwise, you're all welcome to stay if you like. You're also free to go. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
We didn't give you the gift card.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good stuff.
Great.
Congratulations.
Put you in the middle. I was on your list tonight, but you actually. Okay. Put you there. Okay. I'll let you leave later. I did miss that. I got out of there.
Congratulations. You're the winner.
That's, Joel, you're good.
Didn't over my body, was it? I mean, probably not.
Good job, Eric.
Very deserving. You're still up and top. Okay.
All right.
Thanks, send it to mom, Deb. Hey, congratulations. Oh, so deserving.
He's always. I got to tell you.
Congratulations.
Because they were all down. I sent her down. She came back really quick, and I, so I had to make.
Congratulations, Ashley.
For her to do it. And I was like, all right, which one do you want? It's fine.
It's better in person than it is on video, like payback. Those kids were so impressive.
Just wait, just wait.
How much?
All right. We're going to move on with our agenda this evening. Right after consent. Next item on the agenda will be our consent agenda. Do any board members wish to remove an individual item from the consent agenda for consideration? Hearing none, we'll read them into the record. We're approving the minutes for the Board of Education, September 25th, 2023. Approval of support staff resignation, Sean Ambrose, Abraham Lincoln Building Secretary. Approval of support staff hiring, Sarah Johansson, library specialist at the public library. Approval of middle school safety drill and approval acceptance of community donations from Joanne Babler, $50 for the Backpack Buddies. Somebody like to make a motion?
Second.
Mike with the motion, and Nikki with the second. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We're on to public comment. We have one individual sign up for public comment. Just as a quick reminder, public comment is a vital part of feedback to the board for matters of interest to the public. If you're unfamiliar with public comment in an open meeting, you're giving a speech on a statement or making a statement on your opinion on a topic pertaining to something that the board can take action on or is in the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. The meetings are held in public, but this is not a public meeting, so there wouldn't be a dialogue back and forth with you about your comment. But we will take your comments into consideration as those matters come before the board.
Thank you.
And we ask that you limit your comment to five minutes. And if you would, Barb, if you'd begin with your full name for the record when you start?
Redna?
Sure, yeah.
Oh, swell. You want me to stand up?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Okay. Well.
And I'll start a timer here for you, and it'll go off when it's, anytime you're ready.
I don't think I'll be speaking that long. Hi, I'm Barb Woodruff. I've lived in the Monroe School District for over 50 years. We live in Green County, and something I would really love to see is Green County lead the way in green effort to prevent climate change. And in that regard, being that we're building a new high school, I am the voice for many others who would love to see solar panels on the high school roof. Ways to reduce fossil fuel usage and take advantage of low-cost, lower-cost solar panels now. And being that we're in the planning stage of the high school, it seems like this is the appropriate time to put that request in. Like I say, I am just here by myself, but many people I've spoken with think this is really a good idea. And our students at the high school are going to be living in a world that is going to be impacted greatly by climate change. This is for them, and to show them that they can lead the way with this high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Move on to item seven, old business. We have an old business. Item eight is new business. First item up, we have items A and B. We'll be taking those, they're related. We've taken those together. The first action will be to rescind the appointment of a public library board of trustee that we made at the previous meeting. And then we'll be appointing a new trustee. And we've got Suzanne, who's the director of the public library here with us tonight to give us a little bit of background on why we're taking those actions.
So when the library board met, they appointed, they selected two applicants to recommend to the Board of Education to appoint to the library board. I took their applications, scanned them into PDF, and then I dragged them into an email that went to Cindy Repnau. Because that's what I always do, send it to Cindy, and everything will be taken care of. And then I got a message back that she was out and said, you know, send it to Heather. And so I don't like to do forwards, really. So I sent, I created an original email, sent it to Heather, and I dragged one applicant's PDF questionnaire. And I also had a PDF of an article about Dr. Pironer on my desktop, and I dragged that instead of the second applicant's questionnaire. And then after you met and made the appointments, I was just skimming the board meeting like I always do when I got home. And I'm like, what the? And I could not figure out any way that could happen. And I went to bed that. And I went to bed that night thinking, well, hey, you know, it's a mess, it'll get fixed. At least it wasn't me. The morning, the next morning, I'm reviewing the email threads and I found out it was me. So I sincerely apologize. It was just a clerical error of dragging the wrong file. And Dr. Pironer thinks it's funny and he's teasing me about it. We almost called him when we didn't have a quorum for our September meeting and we just needed to take care of one thing. And I thought we could call him because he's a board member, but then somebody walked in late. So if we could fix this, I'm sure we'd appreciate it at the library board and I'm sure Dr. Pironer would appreciate it and yeah, we'll get Gary on there where he's supposed to be.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for that.
And I do apologize.
Nope, no worries. So the first item we'll take is the rescinding the appointment for Dr. Pironer. If somebody would like to make that motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Terry and a second by Eric. We'll be rescinding the appointment, Dr. Chasey Pironer, to the public library board of trustees as recommended by Suzanne Holland. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Next item up will be to appoint a new trustee. And I understand Gary Nunchwander is your, your suggestion. Do you want to share anything about Gary before?
Gary has actually been on the library board before and he's been very involved in the building project and that's why the board thinks he's a great candidate. And we seem to be unbalanced in terms of gender, so we were glad to appoint him, they were glad to appoint him on that basis as well. But welcoming him back.
All right. Any questions or discussion from board members? If none, I would entertain a motion.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Terry and a second by Mike to approve the appointment of Gary Nunchwander to the public board of trust, public library board of trustees as recommended by the public library board. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the public library tax exemption. As the district accesses the levy authority for the public library, we must also ratify the library tax exemption as well. Turn it over to administration Ron Nerfink to give us some additional color around that.
Yeah, this is an annual thing we do as a municipality, being a school district, which is an unusual in Wisconsin where we cover a number of other municipalities, right? The city in various townships and the village of Brown Town. Basically what this does, it asserts that the public school district is levying at the level or in excess of what the county does. And so those municipalities end up paying their, those individuals in those municipalities who live within the school district in Monroe end up paying their portion of the public library tax to the district versus directly to the public or to the county. So this just allows us to do that and, and make sure that everyone has a fair and equitable stake because they do do sharing of library costs across the county based upon usage by people from municipalities that aren't part of an area, so.
Okay, excellent. So the exemption resolution we'd be approving this evening is attached to the board packet for board members. Any questions or additional discussion for administration on this one? If not, entertain a motion.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Nikki, second by Eric. To approve the public library tax exemption pending final tax levy approval as recommended by Ron Nelson. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of early graduation requests. We have one individual who's been working really hard it looks like and is ready to leave us an entire year early. So we're excited that she's achieved that, that rare opportunity. Turn it over to administration to provide any additional details around that that they'd like.
Sure, I can. I wrote most of it in there, but she's able to do this because she spent a year in Judah that was combined with Judah in a virtual school and took some extra classes that year. So she got 10 credits in one year. The only thing we always do in this situation is kind of counsel the student and their parents about the opportunities available to them, especially she has some plans of attending an authentic college and she could take those courses through us. Who start college now and then that would be our expense rather than the family's expense. I think the conversation between the school counselor and the family and the mayor deal, they decided they don't want to do that. So, you know, that's their decision and I, you know, she, I don't have any reason to say no to her, to this, because she has done the work and put in the work needed to do this. She does have a plan for after high school. We could have possibly helped her out with that and paid for it, but they've chosen not to do that. I would recommend that we allow it.
And I would support Jeremy's recommendation as well.
Okay, excellent. Any additional questions or conversation around this one? Entertain a motion if somebody would like to make it.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Terry and a second by Mike. Motion is to approve early graduation request of Abigail Andrews as recommended by Jeremy Jackson, high school principal. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item, we've got three applications for students to participate in the Start College Now program. This allows students to take classes that are transcripted and not offered by the high school at this time. Anything additional from?
Just to verify that they're, they're all courses that we don't offer. Getting them at start on college and pathways that they want to go into. So I think it's a good idea and I wish more kids could honestly take advantage of it.
And these are all for this spring, correct, Jeremy?
Yes. It's me and the fall deadline.
As a reminder for, for board members, this, this cost is covered by the, by the district and negotiated with Blackhawk. Any additional questions in this conversation? Entertain a motion. Motion by Terry, second by Mike. To approve the Start College Now application requests of Abigail Grossen, Kayden Ogna and Nivea Clark as recommended by Jeremy Jackson, high school principal. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item up is item F, it's approval of new high school proceeds reinvestment parameters. I understand Ron's been working with our investment advisors to potentially unlock some additional interest from our investments. So I'm not going to try to guess anymore at that. I'll just turn it over to you to give us the details.
Yeah, you have a couple of documents attached. Basically, we talked a little bit about investments in arbitrage and rebate in the past and I'll just give a, a short summary of how it applies. We do our, our tax exempt borrowing for the project to fund the high school once the referendum is, is passed. And then basically you invest those proceeds to help gain some extra dollars, help offset the costs of inflation. You know, some getting, outfitting the high school and various things. And, but the IRS has a law basically in place, it's called arbitrage and rebate, that says you can't tax exempt borrow and then create investment revenue without hitting some timelines. Otherwise, we would all do it all the time, right? Tax exempt borrow to make more money and we have a positive arbitrage. So basically, if you do that, you have a six month timeline, a 12 month timeline, an 18 month timeline and a two year timeline at which your project spending has to hit those marks in order to avoid the rebate money back to the IRS. With our six month delay in, at the start of our project, we're not going to hit those timelines. Our project's been delayed. And so that also means there's opportunity to reinvest funds. And so when you look at, initially, we were expecting to make about $6.2 million over the course of the project in, in investment proceeds. The hope was that we would make our timelines and not have to rebate of that back to the IRS. We now know that we're not going to make that timeline and so it gives us some opportunities to reinvest some proceeds as the project has been delayed. But on some initial conversations with our advisors, you know, if they went for the most aggressive CDs and treasuries that are out there, potentially we could have made, you know, close to nine million, they thought at that point in time. However, about three million of that was going to go back to the IRS, meaning we weren't going to see a huge net increase in what our proceeds were. One thing we can do though is we can, we can invest in tax exempt offerings that are out there that are the same as the bonds that we've issued. And so basically looking at double A or triple A municipal bond opportunities that are out there that are tax exempt bonds. And if you can create enough spread in the, the interest rate, you can still earn some money and then not have to be, pay that rebate back. So the newest estimate from, from PMA, and this is a little more conservative, this comes from their trading desk. That initial big number was like, hey, if we go out and get all the greatest rates, what we get? And they're like, that's likely not to happen. But, so what they did was they looked at if we went out and even just used like some of the liquid funds that are available rates out there right now, we could probably get to almost $7.8 million in, in revenues. However, we wouldn't make our, you know, rebate arbitrage or we would exceed our maximum rebate arbitrage amount of six million on those funds. And so 1.75 million of that would go back to the IRS. So we really don't see the benefit of those funds. So what they would like to do is if we look at that tax exempt way of funding, we can make it so that all of our CDs, our treasury bonds, et cetera, earnings are under the rebate arbitrage amount. So we basically get to keep the full 5.2 million that we would make on those funds. And they're projecting we would make another $1.7 million from the tax exempt reinvestments that we make, which would take that total to nearly 6.9 million. So we're gaining additional interest revenue that we can use versus we could gain more interest revenue. However, it would be money we couldn't use and we would just simply have to transfer back to the IRS. So the parameters that I'm asking you to set, because I, you kind of gave us, or me, the authority back at the time we worked with PMA to, to work with them to structure investments, but this is a little different. Something that districts are just encountering in this go round of, of projects because we're in a rather unusual world the last two to three years with what interest rates are doing. So you can see at the bottom of the PMA document are the investment parameters that they are recommending that we approve. That'll give them the opportunity to look for investments that come up and try and maximize ours. So they're again asking that it would be a minimum of triple A or double A rating category from S and P or the equivalent from the other rating agencies. That the net yield be a minimum of three and a half percent. And that the investments would mature before September 30th of 2025. That way, they might actually ladder that out a little bit at the end, but right now they're looking at bringing that in. So anything after that would be kind of liquid funds available that we would just reinvest on a short term. So I guess, yeah, if we leave it at September 30th, 2025, that's kind of the target rate that they're shooting for, which I think will be fine. That'll be, our project at that point will be, you know, probably 90% wrapped up. So I think we'll be okay with that versus laddering it out. If we do this, it gives them the opportunity to look at those. You know, to be honest, I know Rich was actually down there when, when we were looking at issuing our own bonds and seeing how different people compete on it. So what we would be doing is, these municipalities may have a 20-year bond out there, but we're going to be trying to capture their first year or two of that 20-year bonding and getting those. Certainly if it's a triple A issuance, they'll have a lower rate, which means we would earn less interest. If it's a double A, we would get a little more interest on it. So it's just looking at those opportunities as they come up and trying to, to grab the ones that are best. So there's, right now with where rates are, we might see four plus percent on some double A ratings, on, on some triple As. At the end of last week, they were at about 3.7. I don't know with the conflict that started over the weekend if that's going to change the market any. Always pretty fluid.
So, and none of this, none of what's being proposed is, is going to exit or break any of the, the investments that we've already entered into. So the CDs, this is just taking monies that have matured through that draw schedule and then reinvesting them into a one, two-year municipal or tax exempt.
Correctment. Yeah, we've had, we've had maturities that have already come due, right, which we haven't really spent hardly any money. And so we have a pool of money available to, to reinvest and ladder out to the back end. As we're starting into construction next spring, more, more like a traditional construction, but we have our, we have our design fees with our architects in the, in the interim. The other maturities that are coming due, we'll be covering some of those expenses, but we'll have this whole pool of money that we're able to basically backfill toward the end of our construction project because we obviously didn't have other investments laddered out that far previously. But yeah, we will not break and reissue because these will actually be at a lower interest rate. But we will be able to remain under our arbitrage or percentage, so.
And it'll create around 100, around 650,000 additional interest dollars.
What it's projecting right now, obviously it'll depend upon what the, the final rates that we're able to get on those, those tax exempt. It could, could go up from that, could be a little less than that, but the bottom line is we will get more than if we do nothing.
Yeah, like you said, it's kind of strange times right now, so I appreciate you and the investment firm staying on top of this stuff for us. I know you're hawking it, so I appreciate that. I think it's gonna, it's gonna work out for us. Ron, are you, if you compare this against an estimated draw schedule from CG Schmidt, I, I just, I just want you to tell me and convince me that you're, you're gonna keep your cash flow positive as we get towards the end.
We've actually, so there's two things. So I have a meeting, well, we have a meeting every Wednesday and one of the things after we approve tonight, I'm going to send out to Dan and Steve is to review. So we have a draw schedule from, from CG Schmidt on the project. And you can kind of see on what's in the PMA document, there's a big line at the bottom, at the back end. And so basically, we have positive cash flow throughout that, that, you know, that we're going to have reserves that are okay. However, one thing that we're, we're looking at or the draw schedule was looking at was the 88 million of the referendum. Obviously, we know we're going to spend 94 million or maybe a little more with the interest proceeds that are out there. And so I want to go back before we would invest in any investments to, to set ourselves into what those would be. I want to put about another 200 to 250,000 per month into those heavy months of construction to account for that other $6 million and then make sure that we still have that positive cash flow for each month when those draws happen. And that'll be how we'll set the amount that we'll ladder out to the end.
How tight are you to the end of their, their construction schedule? And the reason I ask is because I, I don't want to limit ourselves from being able to accelerate the schedule if they see opportunities now upfront. We invest now and we don't have the money available to help them accelerate. I, I'd love the idea of getting extra money, but I, I just want to understand the risk.
Yeah, most of it's going out to about November, December of 2025, which I think is where they've been. And after that, the draws get pretty small, which is I think where they've said at the most aggressive, that's when we could be done. And we, we may not be done till more, the spring of 2026. That's why we've cautiously said move in September, you know, of 2026 would be the, the end. If we can move it up, that's great. As you know, there's oftentimes draws that come in after construction's done, right? There's always contingency that's held. And so I really don't see that we're more likely is we're going to still have funds, especially if we stick with that September 2025 day. We're more likely going to have more funds at the back end that we're holding in liquid accounts. And so when you see we've got about a differential between 6 million of arbitrage and 5.2 million right now of taxable earnings, we'll be able to put some of those monies into treasuries or even just a liquid account, right? We're Where WISK is who we utilize as a state consortium of funds, much like the state investment fund, and then gets a little extra earnings. And we could actually keep some of those as long as we stay underneath that arbitrage rate. So we're not laddering out so far that we're going to, if we would magically get four or five months ahead, that we should be hampered by that.
What's the, is there time pressure on this? Like, is there a specific time that you need to make some of these decisions by?
Well, we have a pretty big pool of money that's sitting there right now that if it keeps earning at a taxable rate, just keeps ticking up that arbitrage number. And so, the sooner that we can get that reinvested and tax-exempt, the more likely that we get to keep the proceeds rather than having them go back to the IRS. So there's, their intent would be if we get this, they'll already, you know, they'll tell their trade desk and they'll already, as soon as probably Friday, start looking for opportunities that are out there, depending upon how the market's doing, right? If the market's not great, they'll wait a week or two, right? And that's why we wanted to keep a little bit of that spread in there with the arbitrage rate, because we need to do that.
What Ron, what you're hoping for us is because prior to investing federal government debt, right? In CDs, and this is municipal tax exemption, it's the nature of that, how this all works.
And basically, you have to structure it, then, because I, you know, would have assumed that US treasuries would have also fallen into that category. But basically, the law says, because they understand that spreads exist out there, the law says basically, any new debt has to be, what's the word? Not structurally significant, but structurally equivalent, I guess, to what your own issuance was. And so, because we were AA municipal, we have to stick to AA or better municipal tax-exempt bonding. We, you know, if we were high-risk speculators, we couldn't issue AA and go out and, you know, invest in single A, and not that anybody would, should want to do that. But, you know, they, that's why they worded the language like that.
Okay. Any additional questions or conversation for administration on this one? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion if somebody would like to make it. Motion by Mickey.
Second.
And a second by Eric. To approve the new high school proceeds reinvestment parameters as presented by Ron Olson, business administrator. A voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is item G. It's an informational item. Read out on the National FFA Convention and Expo. It's going to be taking place, I believe there's a couple of bus, or at least one bus full of kids from area schools that'll be heading out into, it's Indiana, Indianapolis? Indianapolis coming up, yeah?
This is a trip that they do pretty much every year. An opportunity for our students, but yeah, they partner with a bunch of other southern and central Wisconsin schools and their advisors and get to not only network with those FFA members, but FFA members from around the nation and their leaders and see events and presentations down there, as well as, you know, just, there's a rodeo, I think, and do some fun things as well. So I'd recommend doing this, because they get a lot out of it, wouldn't they?
All right. And the policy that allows for the district-sponsored trips is also in your packet. This one's informational only, so any additional questions for administration on the trip? Okay. Hope they have a great time, learn a lot, do good. Thank you. Next item is item H. It's also informational. Wisconsin Swiss and Lumberjack Cheese Producers Association donation. I understand in your board packets is a description from the Wisconsin Swiss and Lumberjack Cheese Producers Association that they will be disbanding and they're distributing the funds that were held by that organization to which our FFA chapter will receive $10,000. Any additional questions or conversation? That'll help out with the trip. We certainly thank the Wisconsin Swiss and Lumberjack Cheese Producers Association for thinking of us and providing some opportunities for our FFA students. Okay. We're on to item I, so it's our high school building project update. So, I'm sorry. Looking for some of my notes here. Okay, so we're continuing on the project. We've got Carl and Mike from Huffkin, Huffkin, sorry, Huffman Keel here with us tonight. They are, they are our owner's rep and our, the district's and the board's voice in all these conversations. I understand you guys had a wonderful day of meetings here today with some of our staff over at the high school. So you guys are digging in and getting involved. We appreciate that. The district visited both Milton and Dell's high schools on Friday, and the planning meetings have begun. I believe those are the ones that you were sitting in with at the high school with Jeremy. Those have begun as of this week. We will be planning a community update meeting sometime in December. It's a date to be determined at this point. Administration's going to look to schedule it to avoid any conflicts with any activities or school activities that may be going on where possible. And turn it over to administration and to Carl and Mike to add any more color.
Okay, so just, I'm just going to throw a couple more things in here before Mike and Carl go. So we do have the bids for the HVAC and associated electrical work at Abe. Well, actually, they're due October 20th, so they're due this month. So the walkthrough is going to be on the 13th. CG Schmidt reports that they have at least three interesting companies for each part of the process. So the tours, I thought, were excellent. The schools that received us, the staff that went asked excellent questions, and you could tell even with the groups, Jeremy has a pretty aggressive plan this week to do a lot of meetings and get a lot of input initially, so we can continue moving on this design process. So the sewer, the water, the lift station, the cut fill, roads, parking, pre-design, all that is continuing. Traffic study is currently running, you know, and then we're going to be receiving the report from the wetland delineator soon about the crossings on the highway KK to the east part of the property. Certified survey map is recorded at the county. Soybeans were came off last week, so we're going to be getting the CGC, I believe is doing the borings, and that that's going to happen this week. And Richie talked about 68 weeks for the community engagement, or community presentations. And with that, I would tell you that Huffman Keel is working hard at breaking X speed to get caught up and get up to speed, and they've been very participatory in pretty much everything. So I'm going to turn that over to these two gentlemen, so they can talk a little bit about their work.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm Mike Huffman with Huffman Keel. I just want to start by saying thank you for selecting us. Thanks for placing your confidence in us to serve as your numerous representative. This is the type of project that we seek out. Your organization is one that we truly believe in your mission. We like to work with organizations that have a great reach into their community. So this is the target for what we want to do. So again, thank you very much. Excuse me. I'll be joined on the project with Carl Kramer and Ryan Burton. Ryan is making his way back from Colorado on a short vacation tonight, so he couldn't be here. But these individuals really have a tremendous amount of strength in the development field. Carl specifically has a lot of years in.
More than I care to think.
In construction field operations. He also has worked in the past for an architectural firm, so he's very in-depth with knowledge on the requirements of plans and specifications. And he'll be a good monitor of that and enforcer of the requirements of those documents throughout the project. Ryan, Ryan has particular strengths in real estate functions around development. He will be together with myself, very, very deep into the budget side of what you're doing. In fact, that's one of our most critical first tasks, is to completely immerse ourselves in your budget. We've already had a conversation with CG Schmidt and are trying to understand everything that went into their pulling together their numbers, and we're doing a bit of a test to make sure that the soft costs that they assumed outside of hard construction costs are all appropriate. So I hope by the end of this week, we know really all the things that are needed to know about your budget and how we think that's going to reflect on the design process that's out in front of us. Don't have a lot to report right now, but, you know, the way this works best, in our experience, is if we can have a good, open dialogue with you. You guys are, have a difficult job in the community and have high-level decisions to make about a really, really huge, huge project. And we want to make sure that you're informed and that those decisions are, we've teed you up with a lot of background information for that. So we are truly open to any communications that you have. Obviously, we'll be working very closely with Superintendent Figarola. So he used to call on you Fig. I'm a little more formal in this setting. So we're happy to report to you on a monthly basis, every other month basis, wherever this board feels is necessary to be in tune with the project. So, once again, thank you and I'll talk to you in the future.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions, comments?
Just welcome to the city of Monroe, the school district of Monroe on the project. It's a pleasure to have you guys here, and it's really nice to hear you're already digging into the budget and testing, you know, the budget numbers of the contractors versus what you guys have experienced. So really good to have you guys on board.
Okay. We'll move on then to item nine. It's informational items, so it's, first up is boardsmanship. So one item, did get a chance to speak further with Wasby regarding some professional development and onboarding for a new district administrator evaluation tool. We can expect to do, to work through that professional development sometime in January. I'll be working with Dan Neerad on his availability there, and then I'll work with Cindy to get those potential dates out to board members, so that we can save those dates. One other item, we do have our annual meeting next Monday, this location, 5:00 PM. So that's 10:16, 5:00 PM at Bauer. Anything from administration?
Nothing.
I do not have any current Board of Education correspondents to comment on committee reports. Anything from you, Mike? No. Eric?
Nothing from me.
Mickey?
We're doing a meet tonight, and Todd and team gave us an update on where things are at and all the data that they have and what they're working on, so it was good.
Okay. ERC meet this week?
Yep.
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday night. ERC will meet as well.
Okay. Terry?
PIE board met last Thursday, October 5th. Our event, which we are going to go back to the Steak and Shake names, because that's what everybody knows, and nobody could even remember what we called it last year. So we went back to Steak and Shake. That's going to happen December 3rd. Save the dates did go out. We're working on sponsorship lists. High school groups are going to provide the entertainment and the auction items again this year, so that'll be nice. Some discussion about whether to continue or discontinue the online auction thing. We're going to keep talking about that. November 9th is our next meeting. We have a lot of work to do between now and the actual event. And that's about it, Cindy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
All right.
Thanks for your work on that. Okay. Agenda items for future discussion from board members. I have no communication from MEA or Mass for the liaison report. Questions from press? No questions from press? We'll get that at 8:05. I would accept, I would entertain one final question. Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Terry. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are ready.